Okidoki. Hey, good evening, everybody. Hello. Well, that was nice. Thank you. Appreciate that. So, no metal detector. That's interesting. That's good. Oh, lucky here. What's happening, everybody? I am live. Hey, hey, we're making public comment tonight. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. We got a gang. Hi, I'm Reagan.
I'm Ryan.
Ryan, nice to meet you. Armak, nice to meet you. Good to see you again. How are you? Thanks.
I wanted to go over some stuff before everything starts.
Okay.
Did you want to go first, then I'll go after you?
Well, um, yeah, because I think I've figured out exactly what they're doing because, uh, Bill Hayashi, um, not even citing right the right statute. Do you know he's trying to hem you up for requesting a booking photo?
I never requested it.
I know. That's how stupid he is. He's using statute that allows for prosecution if you're, um, disseminating a booking photo for, uh, revenue purposes. That's what the pecuniary gain is all about anyway. And he's not even citing, this guy, I don't, I don't, I want to know who drafted that response to you. I mean, was it a fifth grader? Because even a fifth grader that can read would know not to cite that. So whatever you say, say it.
Well, I was gonna, just so you know, I was gonna start out by just going over my, I, I've been practicing it, and it's been about three minutes, if I speak quickly.
Uh huh.
So, um, I was gonna just tell them about the whole thing, when I started protesting on the public side, like the whole thing about that, and then, and then go into the, the incident and everything. And it's, it's like, if I speak quickly, I can get in three minutes.
Do you have a, do you, do you have an ask? What's your ask?
Oh, I'm asking for them to comply with the law and give me the public records that I've been requesting.
And if...
And I'm gonna mention bringing, going to district court as well.
Yeah, because I, the reason they're doing this to you is because they used your photograph or that video that Deborah Swenson made. They used that to do a criminal investigation on you, to determine who you were. Because if you'll recall, they didn't start calling you by name until after that.
Hmm, no. Uh, Bruce Williams has been called, remember Bruce Williams?
Yeah, and it was way after that.
It was after that?
Yes.
After the Deborah Swenson?
Yes.
That was before?
No, because I didn't even get involved with you until after you had contact with Deborah.
They did facial recognition probably?
So that's part of an investigation. So now the records request is gonna intensify. Because now I want the investigation that they did to identify you. And they don't have that anywhere in policy. They haven't provided a policy, Hayashi didn't provide you a policy that says you have to identify. So they need to explain why I don't have to identify, but you do.
I'm also gonna bring that up, that I've already been getting public records from the city of Sheridan without an ID. No one's ever asked him for an ID. And this guy, the security guard?
Yeah.
He heard us kinda talking, and he was like, hey, can I just ask you guys what's going on? Because they were talking about First Amendment and stuff like that, so they know that we're gonna be here.
Good.
Sheridan watches every one of my videos, so they saw the one I just published two days ago. So they're, they're ready for us.
So hopefully the city council...
Reagan's here.
Oh, he's cool. Hopefully the city council realizes they work for the people.
Yeah.
Not, they're, they're not elected to protect government. So, this'll be, this'll be interesting. We'll see. I think you're great. I don't, I mean...
Sounds good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't write my stuff out anymore.
Well, I didn't, I didn't write it out. I'm gonna wait, but I have notes.
Yeah, but you got dates and everything.
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna listen to DMA deliver his first public address.
I'm gonna go live as well.
Oh, are you? You're gonna go live? Okay, he's gonna go live too.
So everyone that's in here, just stay in Reagan's.
Yeah, you heard that. Stay in Reagan's and give me all the money. You know, because we do this for money. That's all we, that's the only reason we do this.
Just for listening to you, that's it.
Yeah, we just...
We're not, we're not trying to like make change in any of these.
No, not us. We just, we just do it for something to do, for money.
We just like to harass, that's all.
Yeah.
Antagonize.
Yeah, because we're just, you know, that's just us.
So should we just go in there like we're...
Yeah, it's 6:56.
Should we go in there now?
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm gonna go pee, so I don't, you probably have to pee.
No, I'm good. Alright. Okay. So yeah, hey, everybody, we're in Sheridan. We're gonna go to the city council meeting. It starts at seven. Here are the city council members. I hope I, this stream doesn't end up buffering in that room. Um, council member. Hey, Russ, thank you for that. Much appreciated. Hope you're doing well, Russ. Get back out here with us as soon as you can. Yeah, you're exactly right, Ellie. Remember, I think this guy's the bootlicker. My first appearances. Well, no, no intrusive, uh, security. That's awesome. I like that. That's the first, uh, city council meeting I've been to where I haven't had to go through a metal detector. Jen, well, thank you very much. Yeah, you guys, isn't that a fact? Somebody sent me... I believe it was Amanda. We're doing a thumbnail. Okay, thumbnail done. So yeah, I was out and about today and, uh, I was so thankful that I got that box of hand warmers and those Pyrex baking dishes yesterday. I think it was from Amanda. If not, um, I'm sorry. Thank you to whoever sent that. But I'm pretty sure it was Amanda. She sent some baking dishes for John, but also sent a box of hand warmers. Oh, and we've got people that are freezing. Are you ready? Where's yours? Where's your camera?
It's right there.
Oh. Okay, very good. Okay, so we're not buffering yet, so that's good. There's the chief of the police over there. City manager, city clerk, city clerk. Where's their attorney? So, public sign up sheet or what? Do you all have a public, a public comment? Do you do a sign up sheet for public comment?
Yeah.
Right here? Okay, thank you. Where it says public shh, sign up sheet for public comment?
Then I have extra copies of the agenda for tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, hey, are you, you need to sign up. You sign up first. So see, this is what happens. You can put whatever you want. You just put above, above me though, so you go first.
No, you go first.
Oh, you want me to go first? Oh, okay. Sorry. It's good that this diocese isn't, uh, clear up here and the people are down here. I like being level. Oh, very nice. Nice, nice work. Cute little finder. I love it. He's serious. I'm gonna set this right here. Hold that for me, would you please? Okay, thank you very much. Russ, Russ wasn't here. Russ gave us five bucks. Because he knows we're...
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Andrea. I'm here with the Community Language Cooperative. The city of Sheridan has committed to practice language justice, and today, that's what we're going to be doing. We're going to provide simultaneous interpretation in English and Spanish so that our participants can hear and speak in the language of their heart. Once we turn on the interpretation, please make sure that you select the globe at the bottom of your screen, where you can choose English or Spanish. If you're fully bilingual in those two languages, you don't need to select either or. Hola a todos, mi nombre es Andrea. Estoy aquí con la Community Language Cooperative. Estoy aquí porque la ciudad de Sheridan se ha comprometido a practicar la justicia del lenguaje para que todos puedan hablar y escuchar el idioma de su corazón. Vamos a tener interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español, y cuando aprendamos de interpretación, por favor asegúrate de seleccionar la parte inferior de tu pantalla, donde va a salir un mapa mundo, y ahí puedes escoger inglés o español. Si eres totalmente bilingüe, no tienes que seleccionar ninguno. Thank you so much, and we give you interpretation right.
Thank you. I'll call this regular meeting of the Sheridan City Council to order at 7:03 PM. It's November 14th, 2022. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
Stain.
Here.
Deacon.
Here.
Mayor, fire clerk.
Here.
Councilmember Whitaker.
Here.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
You have a card. Yeah, I'm here.
We rise for the invocation called by the church allegiance.
In honor of Veterans Day, uh, dear Lord, uh, we know that freedom isn't free, and a special few pay the price for many. We owe debt of gratitude to all the courageous men and women who have served and sacrificed to protect us and our freedoms. Today, as we remember our veterans, we ask you to bless each one and meet their every need. We pray they will know how valued, respected, and appreciated they are. Please bless their families for their many sacrifices as well. We ask for your protection over all who are serving now, and ask you to bring them home safely. We also ask you comfort all who are missing someone who served. In Jesus' name, we ask these things. Um, Lord, just always, please watch over our citizens of Sheridan, uh, those that come and go and visit, uh, this fine city. Also, as always, Lord, give us the wisdom and compassion and kindness to serve, uh, the city of Sheridan, those that work on staff, uh, the, those that are in the police department, fire department, the EMTs, and as always, those of us who stand here behind this diocese, Lord. We ask all of these things, in our mighty name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any changes to our...
No changes tonight, ma'am, Mary.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. First thing we have on our agenda tonight is presentation. This Sheridan Celebrates Report for 2022 from Jane Wright.
Good evening and thank you. Now I'm on. And there I am up there too. Thank you, gentlemen. This is the events report for 2022, and we had something new, and then we went back to tradition. So we started out with the new, and that was Parks Palooza, and we had one of those in each board. The goals for the Park Paloozas were informal positive interaction between ward representatives and their public, and then engaging the community. The elements included refreshments, music, entertainment, crafts, and games. And, um, as you can see in these photos, Jay is, uh, engaging some of our youngest members, as is Sally. And, um, entertainment came there from Desiree, so it was really wonderful. I have great pictures. Um, somebody alluded earlier to the, um, the chief, and I think I talked about this, what a great job he did interacting with the community of the Parks Palooza. It was my absolute pleasure to work directly with the city council members on each of these events and bring their vision to reality. They all had lots of different ideas. Um, and sometimes we thought of things that were really big and had to rein those in, but we had other ideas that worked really well. Uh, we repeated some of the elements, so Kona Ice was our refreshments at every event. I think people actually liked some of those things being repeated because they had an opportunity to know they were gonna get another Kona Ice, um, or be able to play some games that maybe they hadn't played when we have the life-size games, uh, as well as we had the crafts. And sometimes the crafts got completed the very last time we actually ran completely out of craft supplies, so it kind of depended on the audience. There was different entertainment at each event, and that was partly what separated it, in addition to having different people there to meet and greet with the public. We had a, a comment from one community member, and she said, "It got me out into the parks. I wouldn't have been there otherwise." And I think that that's really true, that sometimes we do need to invite people right to the parks in the community, um, because not everybody uses the parks. Um, what we did see at River Run is that we saw that most of the attendees seemed to be there for the fun in the river, not necessarily for the event. But we had a great partnership with the Colorado River Surfing Association. Down on the bottom right there, you see somebody actually river surf. And the gentleman that, um, I partnered with, he was so good talking about it for this event. Um, and I thought that was really good. Um, you saw some of the balloon twisting on the first slide with Desiree, um, and then the pinata, and the pinata was also very popular. So that was something that was different in this event. Um, as was mentioned in the earlier part of the meeting, in the, um, work session, we talked about improving publicity, and we figured that out after the first event, that we really needed to do something more to improve our publicity. So we did that, and we did really improve it. We had a great turnout for the Bobcat event, even though it was scorching hot that day. Um, Jay pointed out earlier that, um, it was easier for him to be on Sunday, and I think one of the things that was nice about having the different events is we did have the opportunity to accommodate schedules of the different council members. Um, it did not diminish the attendance, having it on a Sunday at all. It was very well attended. And I think a lot of that had to do with the postcard mailing. Um, I gotta give a high five to the chief. Uh, he really interacted. I think he climbed the jungle, Jen, with the kids, and we even got him out there for the water spray. Um, and the water spray was such a blessing at the end of that event. It was so hot. Uh, but you see the field, you see the, um, you can see the, the kids actually got to spray the hose. They thought that was the cat's meow. Um, in the field games, you can see the young man just having a ball at that tug of war. Um, and then the, the playground had just recently been finished, so it was really nice. Um, and going back to that comment from the public that people, you know, they wouldn't necessarily even notice they had a new playground in their community if they hadn't kind of been encouraged to come out to the park. In Sheridan Community Park, we had the nature educators were there, and, um, this is only one slide. They also have a tarantula and a snake, and they have the snake out.
Oh my God, stuff government shouldn't be doing.
Very close when nature educators is there. Um, and so that was really nice. Um, the, we had the partnership with the VFW band, um, was throughout the, all of the events. One of the things that was notable at this event is, is that we had hoped to do a, uh, kickball game. But for some reason, although we made arrangements with South Suburban to have the shelter in the field area, somehow it got double booked, and so we just tried to work through it. Um, the chief and, and officers were there, and we had planned to do the kickball game, but soon as we stopped the music to do the kickball game, everyone left. Um, so we had the fire spray was supposed to happen too, and they only had a handful of kids left. So, uh, again, the live and learn thing. If you have live music, when that live music stops, people kind of think the event is over unless you make some kind of announcement to let them know that that's not the case. You can see the kids engaging in those life-size games, um, and the crafts. Like I said, we could completely ran out of craft supplies at that event, so that was really nice. Um, the community partnership with the Colorado VFW Band is excellent, and, um, the mayor received a card from a band member thanking us for giving them the opportunity. Um, and we were so grateful to have them. So that's a, you know, a win-win, wonderful win-win. So this was something we tried. So, again, trial and error. It's, this is a, I said trial and repeal, which is kind of what we did. We had the race route determined. We had the logo designed. You see it there, wonderful logo. We had online registration launched. We had prepared for in-person registration, working with one of our committee members, Nellie Lyman, who is, um, fluent in Spanish. We made forms, we inter, we, uh, translated those forms. We had a date set up. We were gonna have them come to the last Park Palooza, but we had absolutely no registrations at that point. And so it did not make sense to start taking cash from people when we didn't have any registrations and we had had the registration, um, online registration launched for six weeks. So, um, and we had a group of volunteers, some Boy Scouts, that were gonna come out and help us with the race. So we had all, we had all measured, everything we figured out, um, but then we canceled it because there just wasn't community interest. Um, or possibly we didn't promote it the best that we could have. So I, I'm not quite sure about that. I know that, that there are a lot of races out there that happen in the community. Some of them happen for a charitable cause, and maybe that's what drives people to be involved with the race, and maybe it's a little less interesting to people if it's just out there. So, um, don't know for sure, but it is, it does show that the flexibility of the committee and the group that works together, that we try things and we're willing to make changes and be flexible. That children's parade, so nice to have the children's parade back this year. And so this is where we're returning more to tradition. And you will see the South, the Sheridan Celebrates logo up there on the top for these tradit, more traditional Sheridan Celebrates events. Um, the registration and promotion is, um, done with Alice Terry School. They do all the heavy lifting for that, and we really appreciate that they do that. Um, Sally is also one of the key people that that's involved, yeah, with the children's parade. Um, she's cut out of this picture though, isn't she?
Yes.
What's the deal there, huh? Um, and then I have to give a high five to the mayor too. The mayor recruited Rudy the Raptor. You see him there for the children's parade, and that guy was great. He hung out all afternoon, and Sally's really good at trying to offer those poor mascots some time out inside the building, and he kept saying, nope, he didn't need it. And he just hung out and was on the stage and played the large games with the kids, so that was really great. Um, Perry's Pizzeria was our new sponsor this year. Chick-fil-A, the person we'd worked with for many years, right up until 2019. She had, had moved on. I think she actually even moved out of state. And so we didn't have a good contact with Chick-fil-A anymore, and Perry's just came right in and filmed in for us, and we really appreciated that. This is the first time we have ever had a motorized vehicle in the children's parade. But I was really pleased that those kids were wearing helmets. That was a good thing. So, um, again, the community partnership with the Sheridan schools, it makes such a difference for Sheridan Celebrates to have all these different community partners, and that one was really important. Um, so we really appreciate that.
Hey, Jane, before we go on to the next one, the, the Raptor? Rudy the Rap, what?
Yeah.
This is with City of Glendale? Okay, what, what is that?
He's the rugby mascot. And the city of Glendale paid for him.
Right, right.
So Tara, Tara worked her magic with the mayor of Glendale, and the city paid for him.
That's the city manager?
Oh, that's cool.
And he was there for hours. And he was so fun with the kid. Everybody loved him.
That's awesome.
Our thank you note has a really great picture of him.
Oh, reason 5,022,562 of things government should not be doing.
Really appreciated the Sheridan PE's new rolling blockade, very, um, positive. And, uh, Lieutenant Mitchell came to our last Sheridan Celebrates meeting and did a report, and we appreciated that too, that he was able to share how that worked. Um, we got to honor, um, this is Dan and Renee Sittler, and, um, I, well, I don't know, Tara's the one that wrote it up, but they've been here forever, like, all the way back. The Sitter family, Dan's family has been, I think in Sheridan since Sheridan started, maybe Dawn, you might know. But anyway, forever. And they have been on the Sheridan Celebrates committee really for a long time, have always been out to volunteer. So that was really special to be able to honor them as the royalty for this year. And I have an announcement who our royalty is for 2023, and that is our friend Arlene will be the queen. Queen Arlene.
Who is the city clerk?
So really excited about that. So, um, it's really fun to have a queen and a king. And Arlene asked me, she told me, well, it kind of depends on who the king is. And I said, well, you're like Queen Elizabeth. You don't have a king. You're too important to even have a king. So there you have it. Um, the famous Westerners returned. They are so great and so wonderful to work with. We really appreciate them, and it was so fun to have the clowns back too. So it was a good grand parade. It, um, a lot of fun for that parade. Um, and appreciated, like I said, the rolling blockade. Our entertainment, Shelby's was awesome, and one of the cheapest bands we've ever paid for. They really wanted to be here. Dallas and I have been pushing for Shelby's for three or four years now. Finally got Shelby's to come, but do you love this? He got all these kids up on the stage. He's singing Grease Lightning, well, she is singing Grease Lightning, and the kids, he's got them all to point and invited them up on stage. He got off the stage and came down into the audience. It was just great, um, creativity and engagement of the crowd. Um, you can see Rockies up there with them too. Uh, so, and the professional sports team and mascots, huge, huge. People really love that. Kids, pictures everywhere. Um, I got mine with Miles. I don't know who you guys got yours.
She gets to talk as long as she wants because she's doing a presentation.
Are always a big hit with the kids, and the inflatables are like one of the most dangerous things, right? Inflatables are really actually pretty high risk. And the schools, again, partnerships with the schools, Steven Garcia's on the committee, and he helped us recruit people to do it, and they were excellent. They came to the volunteer training. They live like right over here. Um, but they came to the training. They very much wanted to know what their responsibilities were. They were just excellent, and so it made me feel really good that it was going to be a very safe day in the, um, inflatables. Um, so we, again, that community partnership, when we have the Sheridan schools that can help us out with helping us find volunteers. Well, we actually pay them a little something, but just finding the right people to do the right job. Exhibitors, um, smaller number of exhibitors this year than we have had in the past. A couple of reasons for that. The Futsal Court had not been built in 2019, and that came in during the time, um, during the COVID, uh, walk-through, drive-through parade time. So that, that did change things for us because we couldn't put exhibitors on that space anymore. So that reduced it by about 10, but then it, it really was slow going to fill those exhibitor spaces. Um, my observation is, is that we had more nonprofits that were interested and crafters that were in, interested, and the direct sales or market, multi-level marketing people were less interested than they had been in the past. And I'm not sure if that's because during the time of COVID, they found other ways to market themselves, and so they really were not doing events as much anymore, but it really did change things for us. So, um, but, you know, the prices were right, and we were able to fill 82 booths, and we only had a few no-shows, so that's actually really good. Um, and then the new festival passes were pretty popular. So you have a picture of a completed pass down there at the bottom, um, and they were really very popular. We were able to garner 120, um, valid emails off of those passes, so that was really great. And we couldn't do it without the Knights of Columbus. I love the smoke. Um, they had such a line, that was... They had such a line, that was one of the things, one of the comments on the survey information, if you read through it, that there was such a line for people to go to Burger. So that was interesting. But again, community partnerships, we couldn't do it without the Knights of Columbus doing the beer booth and the burgers, so we really appreciate them. They also helped with the grand parade and I didn't say that earlier. They do the staging for the grand parade and Terrence at the meeting that we just recently had say, I didn't have to do anything, those guys knew exactly what they were doing. So we can't do it without the community. Sponsorships, we, despite having less exhibitors, we did great with sponsorships. We continue to increase our sponsorship level, our cash sponsorship level. We had almost twice the 2020 level this year. And then we garnered two new sponsors and one, one of those was Dick's Towing. So again, in that time of when we, the hiatus, when we were doing something different during COVID, Conley left the community and sold their business to Dick's Towing. And it was a challenge to get them, but we did get them. And ironically, the guy that still works at Dick's Towing worked for Conley. So when I finally got to the right person, he's like, oh, I know all about that. So it was great. It was really great to have them back and we really appreciate that they were willing to do the reviewing this year. And again, Perry's Pizzeria was a new sponsor for the children's parade, so that was great. We also do a lot of in-kind sponsorships and those reduce the cost to the city. So everything from the flyers that go out to the schools, all those festival passes that we handed out, those were all sponsored. So, and then our banners, we get to update our promotional banners, that's all taken care of. So we have a lot of in-kind sponsors. We get chairs, the chairs that go under the tents, all of that is donated. So we really appreciate those folks who are in the city that provide those in-kind sponsorships to us as well. Promotion. Parks Palooza attendance obviously improved when we mailed the postcards and then when we did a school flyer, you see that on the left-hand side, we did the school flyer and before the last Parks Palooza at the Sheridan Community Park. And both of those things make a difference. The one on the right-hand side is the Sheridan Celebrates school flyer and that went out to the schools and that helps us get to the schools, but it doesn't help us get to those who don't have kids in school. So I think those mailing, we talked earlier about that, but the direct mails, I think really make a difference. Facebook paid advertising also helps us reach just beyond. So Tara, as you were talking about earlier, bringing people from outside into the community and I think it's Facebook advertising does that. I also think the banners do that. I always get comments from people that say they saw the banners. So innovative promotional efforts to replace the printed newsletter. We also handed out flyers with the help of Tina and Beth at the Sharing with Sheridan. So trying to find other ways to get the word out to folks. The postcards did arrive right before the Bobcat and the flyers were distributed to the schools right before Sheridan Community Park. It was the first year that we have done Sheridan Celebrates in its more traditional form since the printed newsletter is no longer around. So I felt like, and I think in the feedback from the committee, that we really felt the attendance was very good, regardless of the fact that we didn't have a printed newsletter. So I think there are things that worked. What, what didn't have the attendance and what we heard was the grand parade, that the parade, grand parade attendance was very down. And we heard that from people who were on the committee that had participated as well as in the parade surveys. Future opportunities. So we had gaps in the grand parade this year and gaps in the parade are really a challenge. And so we talked about this quite a bit in our committee meeting. And thanks to Terrence, we have a good suggestion that Lieutenant Mitchell, who also attended our meeting last time, was very in favor of. And that is to stop the parade right at the corner of Milan and Federal before it heads up the hill and let everybody pile back up before you head up the hill. Because it's a, it's a little bit of a climb to go up that hill, give everybody a little bit of a breather and then head up the hill. So I think that's a really good suggestion. I love working with the committee because everybody's got ideas and ways to solve problems. And that's a real positive. So that's why you see all these walking groups on this slide. Plenty more ways to encourage entries and attendance at both of the parades. Attendance was down for the children's parade, I think, this year too, particularly with early childhood center. So talking to them and seeing what we might be able to do to get a few more kids out. Contemplate promoting parades separately somehow since the attendance of the parade was smaller than the attendance at the festival. And then upgrade coordination with all the city Sheridan social media accounts. And we had a meeting just prior to this to talk about how we can go about doing that and working more together as Sheridan Celebrates and the city staff with the social media accounts to make sure we're sharing and getting the word out effectively. Other opportunities, extend the early boot discount deadline. I think we're gonna have to do that at least for a while to make sure that we fill all those booths. We did, we never ever went back. We had the early boot fee went all the way through. We haven't discussed that yet in the Sheridan Celebrates Committee, but we'll talk about that a little bit. Increase and enhance directional signage to ease exhibit a load-in. There were a lot of challenges and there was a lot of feedback on the surveys that people really weren't sure exactly where they were to be going. And with the Futsal Court added, it changed how we had to do the load-in. We used to do the load-in for the exhibitors by utilizing that basketball court and we can't really do that anymore. So really trying to work through that and find something to make that an easier process. But the Futsal Court might also have opportunities that we hadn't thought of. So thinking outside the box, it's there, it might be in our way, but how could we use it? What could we do differently? What I did notice was happening there at some points in time is very small children were inside of there because it's kind of a safety place for small children. So could we get something as simple as just little playground balls and let the kids be able to run around in there? They're really too young to go into the inflatables. So it might be an opportunity to do something really special for the smallest tots in the community and I think that that would be really cool. And then we will utilize that 2020 theme as a creative force for exciting entertainment and activities. We're already all about it. I'm sure Terrence is gonna have a lot of them, they're probably gonna involve alcohol, right? So anyway, maybe a wine tasting, maybe some meat, I don't know, chick turkey legs, who knows what we could do. But a lot of fun. Oh, what's the theme? I've already haven't announced it. And the theme is Sheridan Celebrates Medieval Magic. Yeah, I like it, huh? Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of fun, I think. It's great. We always remind folks in the committee meeting that, you know, it's something little kids can dress up in, right? So we got that. And we, with it not just being medieval, with it being medieval magic, it kind of plays into both sides, whether you're a Harry Potter fan or, or if you're the more traditional Camelot fan, which would be neat. So, you know, you can play in both sides of that. So I think it's gonna be really, really fun. So unique food offerings, unusual entertainment, what can we do with that? So I think that that's, will be really great and I'm very excited about the theme and Terrence?
I'm really excited. I'm gonna be walking around like Jon Snow.
So, and Game of Thrones is really big now too. So I mean, you got a lot of people.
There's a lot of shit going down here in Sheridan.
It's gonna be really, really a lot of fun, so, very cool, so.
Jean? I'm sorry to interrupt again, but it just made me think, we were talking about this. It was maybe two, three years ago and we had somebody here, the guy had like all the bicycles and tricycles.
Petting Palooza?
What, yeah. Is that guy still around anymore?
I'm sure he's still, well, you know, that's a good question. I shouldn't say that, I should, you know, that many people are gone after, I don't know.
I don't know if he could work, I don't know if he could do setup.
Oh, go inside the Futsal, yeah, I think it's too small. Because he used that entire basketball court when he was here, that was so popular.
It was a huge hit with the kids.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little, it did change things. That Futsal Court changed a lot of things for us. I keep figuring out how he could use it. I'm sure there's ways that, you know, maybe it's sidewalk talk in there and that's a big side, you know, who knows?
Right.
Yeah, you just gotta think outside the box. Or inside, inside the court, right? Stay in the court. Okay, what's next? The 2020 theme is, this is one I was gonna announce it because it is in here. Medieval Magic and the queen is Queen Arlene and the grand marshal is Gordon Little. And we have to give Jenna a high five because she nominated him and wrote me a little email and I took it to the meeting and everybody unanimously agreed that it should be Gordon Little. So that's very exciting. Longtime volunteer in the city and we're so grateful to be able to honor him. The Sheridan Celebrates 2023 goals will be set, including a review of fees and deadlines. And then consideration will be made for continuing the Park Palooza events. Partnerships with the VFW, we're excited and I, I please that Todd and Rachel, I was gonna say Katie and I knew that was wrong. Todd and Rachel are here this evening. Todd did attend our meeting last Thursday and has, he's very enthusiastic, we love that. And so we're excited to have them. They have been longtime participants in Sheridan Celebrates and we always welcome new community members, so we're excited for that. Sheridan Rising together with Equity, South Suburban Parks and Recreation, Rappahoe Library District, we couldn't do our work without all of our community partners. They make such a big difference for us. So we really appreciate them. If you haven't been on the Sheridan Celebrates Facebook page, please go look at the sexy new graphic that's on the cover. And then beyond that, I think that's it. Any questions? Oh, I was gonna say, do you have any questions on the surveys? The survey should have been distributed to you, the survey results for the parade. It's a lot of information, but I'd be happy to field any questions on that information. Hearing none, welcome back. I will be gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
Thanks for all your hard work and thanks for the update and stuff, I appreciate it. Okay. We're gonna move on to public comment at this time. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to council, we have three minutes per speaker for that opportunity. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Reagan and I'm not gonna give you my address because it doesn't matter. Um, gee. That was, that's gonna be a hard act to follow and I only get three minutes. But I'm not from Sheridan, I don't live in Sheridan, but I pass through Sheridan on a daily basis. I have a lot of business in Sheridan because I do direct street outreach with the homeless and a lot of them are in Sheridan. And what brings me to Sheridan most of the time is the way the police department mistreats them. So I've had some interactions with the police department and because the arrogance and the lack of accountability continues to fester in that police department, it just keeps bringing me back. And what I want to talk about tonight is a records request. And I would implore all of you on the city council, since you are elected to represent the people and you are not in positions of protecting the government, that you please have a discussion with your city manager about your policies on records requests. You've got the police department playing hardball simply because of arrogance over a Criminal Justice Records Act that this gentleman had made many months ago. It's not a complicated request, it's very simple. And you've got a law firm with someone by the name of Bill Hayashi who responded to the request for the first time in almost five months. That's against the law. And in his request, he cited that he essentially was offering up the town and the police department the opportunity to criminalize this individual for making that records request, that one request. But the problem with Bill is that Bill's an attorney and he's supposed to know the law and what he cited had nothing to do with the records request. He was essentially telling this individual that he was gonna cite him through the police department for providing false information. Okay, if you've got a big problem and you're gonna end up in district court, don't underestimate the citizenry, we're not stupid. We want to know what's going on in government. We follow Sheridan, we follow your red light camera. We're out there recording, exercising our rights. You guys are generating $42,000 a month in red light photo radar tickets. Would you please start praying for people so they know not to pay those damn tickets? Because what you guys are doing is pure theft and that's not what Jesus would do. He just would not. So I'm just here to say, please implore your city manager to get with his chief of police and tell them to do their job because if they don't, Chief Martinez, we're gonna keep coming back. Was that my three-minute timer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. So anyone else who'd like to speak to council tonight?
Right here. Before my time starts, is it exactly three minutes? So I know how fast I have to talk?
Yes, three minutes.
Exactly to the T?
We'll wait till you get to the podium and give your name and address then.
My name is Free American. For several months I have been peacefully protesting your radar, speed radar van. It's on federal and also on Quincy. The first time that I was peacefully protesting on the sidewalk, I was, the police were called and I was approached by Sergeant White who informed me that I was in violation of CRS 18-8-102, obstruction of governmental operations. I explained to him that the claim and exercise of the constitutional right cannot be converted into a crime. I can stand anywhere on a public sidewalk and peacefully protest. The second and third time that I peacefully protested, I was met with Sergeant Lane who also told me I was in violation of the law. I explained to him the same thing and they all let me go. The last incident that I had or recording that I had was on August 17th and the technician Deborah Swenson got out of her van and started taking video footage of me. I immediately went to the city of Sheridan and I did a CCJRA for that footage off of her phone and my public records request was ignored. A month later, on September 18th, I emailed city attorney Bill Hayashi and my email was ignored. On September 20th, I came back here, I had a visit with Commander Moscow who is extremely unprofessional, rude and condescending and doxxed me on my livestream, kept saying my first and last name, which is concerning because I never gave you guys my first and last name. He told me that Hayashi would be responding, I got ignored. A month later, on October 21st, I sent my second email to Hayashi, I got completely ignored. On November 7th, I came in for my second visit, got Hayashi's phone number, left him a voicemail. Finally, the next day on November 8th, Hayashi responds, claiming that my records request is denied because my signature is not legible. Who is he to determine that my signature is not legible? He also said that I must, I didn't provide ID. I've done several records requests with the city of Sheridan and all across the state of Colorado and never provided ID. I do not need to provide ID. CRS 24-72-201, 203 and 204 all clearly state, all public records shall be open for inspection by any person. You do not need to provide ID in the state of Colorado, shall obtain public records. So basically, Hayashi, I, I think that, you know, Hayashi already knows my first and last name. On every email, he addresses me by my first and last name. You guys know who I am. I'm sure that a district court judge would be appalled that you guys are requiring ID, especially given the fact that you guys already know who I am. Secondly, I think a district court judge would think that three months is not a reasonable amount of time to obtain a picture off somebody's phone, but not even the picture, it's been almost three months and I still haven't, I just got a response. It's been three months, so. Yeah, I shouldn't have to come down here and beg to get a public record in which I'm entitled to. So in conclusion, please follow the law and give me the public records that I'm requesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak to council tonight? Anyone online?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
We'll be more up after your public comment at the end of the meeting. We'll move on to staff reports, city clerk.
I have no report tonight.
City manager?
Yes, go ahead. Okay, sorry, it wasn't turned on there. A few others to go over with council. First off, we held a bus stop ribbon cutting last week over here at one of the main bus stops at Veterans Park. And Gordon Little, Gordon is in the news right now. Gordon, who is, as you guys heard, is a longtime Sheridan citizen and a longtime volunteer for the city and a avid user of transit throughout Sheridan, cut the ribbon on the new bus stop for us. And then we also had the ready-to-work crew.
Okay, this is gonna take an hour, I'm gonna step out.
As council is where we executed a contract with Bridge House.
Okay, let's take a break. Okay, let's take a break. That guy's gonna just listen to himself talk for a while. We're just gonna hang out right here for just a moment. Okay, hey, guys, how's it going? So this thing with this records request is really getting stupid. So, oh, thanks, Ellie. Hey, guys. So the only other thing I want to hear before we leave is that chief police, chief of police give his report. They are literally, whoever this attorney is that they hired, this guy is trying to say that they're going to take action against Christopher in an email for essentially falsifying the document. And the statute that he cited has to do with requesting a booking photo. I don't know what this guy is thinking. I don't know how much this damn place pays him, but they need a refund. So they, they've already set precedent in their inconsistencies in policy. They'll allow people to get records requests without ID. They've not defined a process that they technically have room to adopt per the law to, to release information. The police depart, it's the police department. Who, what are we doing? Oh, we're going back in here for something. Hey, Ellie, so you can sign up through the Zoom. If you want to make public comment, you guys, they do round two at the end of the meeting, so go sign up.
Do you want a copy of this, a hard copy?
I don't want.
What do we got going on here?
Do you need a couple more? How many more?
I think that was enough.
We all, we all have one. You all have one?
Ooh, check this out.
So this is the updated city council on administrative order that was executed last week, affected...
Oh, they know the balls are gonna come crashing down. He just signed an administrative order to prevent us from recording.
Effective immediately in accordance with the authority granted to the city manager pursuant to Section 7.3 of the Sheridan Home Rule Charter, this order sets forth reasonable rules and regulations applicable to the use of the entryway, inside lobby, interception areas, council chambers, conference rooms, or other locations inside City Hall in which a public meeting is not being conducted, or other areas of Sheridan City Hall designated as city employee work areas, which are non-public forum. These rules are necessary to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of city council chambers and other administrative offices located inside Sheridan City Hall, safeguards employee safety, maintain emergency access and evacuation routes, and to preserve methods of ingress and egress for the general public to attend city council meetings, municipal court proceedings, or, or other city of Sheridan public meetings occurring inside the city council chambers, and to otherwise safely access the rest, the public restroom facilities inside Sheridan City Hall in the reception lobby area of Sheridan City Hall. As such, the following activities are not permitted inside the aforementioned areas within Sheridan City Hall. One, handing out leaflets, flyers, or other written publications. Two, hand-to-hand distribution and circulation of petitions to collect signatures. Three, petitioning on behalf of candidates for elected office. Four, public demonstrations, which shall mean a rally, a gathering of picketers or protesters, a speech, a march, or any other similar gathering for the purpose of communication or expression of ideas, views, or grievances. Number five, soliciting funds, donations, or services. Number six, picketing. Number seven, placing erecting tables, exhibits, chairs, kiosks, and other structures for displaying or storing literature, fundraising activities, petitioning, selling, or offering merchandise solicitation, or conducting any of the aforementioned activities. And eight, the use of any audio or video recording device without the consent of all persons whose voice or image is being recorded. Consistent with First Amendment protections, the aforementioned activities may be conducted, may be conducted, on public sidewalks adjacent to Sheridan City Hall grounds or outside of Sheridan City Hall, provided that the activity must remain 25 feet from all public entrances to Sheridan City Hall, and those engaged in the activity are not blocking, interfering, or impeding on the rights of others to freely enter and exit Sheridan City Hall and otherwise conduct business within Sheridan City Hall, regardless of distance from the entrances. Further, those engaged in the aforementioned activities outside Sheridan City Hall shall not occupy or block fire or emergency lanes and access, shall not occupy parking spaces, and must stay clear of traffic lanes and vehicular entrances. Any person who fails to comply with this administrative order shall be served with a copy of this administrative order and may be ordered to vacate Sheridan City Hall premises. Refusal to vacate City, refusal to vacate Sheridan City Hall premises after being ordered to do so pursuant to this administrative order may constitute a disruption of city business and will be deemed, will be deemed to no longer be present within Sheridan City Hall on legitimate public business, and shall constitute trespass under the Colorado Revise Statutes in the City of Sheridan Municipal Code issued this ninth day of November 2022. So to councils, what I would say is that I think this document speaks for itself. We do allow people to attend our public meetings in the conference tables here. And they can record and interact with us in accordance with the rules that we have for our meetings. But then outside of the, the city council chambers, and when a meeting is not taking place, then people may not record any person in the building, whether they be employee or otherwise, unless they have their consent. And so this was the result of research by our city attorney's office, and we wanted to bring this to city council's attention, that this has been in effect as of the ninth of November and is at this moment in effect as well. So you folks are welcome to film in here during our meetings. Happy to have you for that. Appreciate you attending and bearing with us with the rules that we have for our meetings during public meetings like that. But after that, I can tell you right now, if you don't have my consent to record me outside of this room and outside of the city council...
I don't need your consent. How's that? You want to arrest me? Do it.
We'll have another public comment.
I'll be back for more public comment.
We'll definitely be addressing that. That's uncommon.
They just made this ordinance because we've been recording them. Holy shit. Wow. Oh, boy. This is gonna get interesting. That fucking city manager just created this administrative order because we've been in here recording them on official business, and he thinks we need his consent to record them in a public building? Well, this is about to get interesting. Holy shit, you guys. Wow. He made this effective, the city manager got this advice from the same city attorney that they're paying. Oh, my God. This is funny. Consistent with First Amendment protections. Any person who fails to comply with this administrative order shall be served with a copy and may be ordered to vacate Sheridan City Hall premises. Refusal to vacate Sheridan City Hall premises after being ordered to do so pursuant to this administrative order may constitute a disruption of city business. Huh, here's an idea. How about just do your fucking business so we don't have to be here? Oh, boy. This guy, this guy thinks signing this makes this a law. That we need his consent to film them while they're working? Did you just hear that? Okay, so, hey, everybody, Ellie, what's the, what's the, you got the WebEx? Listen, you guys can provide comment at the, at the end of this meeting. They're gonna go through the rest of this agenda. So we're right here still with this guy. And then they're gonna go through this stuff. They're gonna go through these ordinances, second reading.
Should we go back in there, because I don't want to miss the, our chance to respond?
Well, we don't get to go until here. So they're gonna go through this stuff. I'm telling everybody, because you can sign up online to provide public comment. So there's the WebEx. So that's what he's sitting up there doing, is waiting for people that are signing up online. So you guys go to WebEx for, okay, so I think Ellie has that link in my chat. Ellie, could you hop in DMAs? Yeah, here, Ellie's got, she's on it.
John, thank you. So we still have some time before the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we still have time before the end of the... This guy literally, this old dude just created this administrative order because they can't do their job, so the cameras end up in City Hall, and he thinks that we don't have a right to record them, where we've always recorded them, right here.
He said, I, we allow you. He's not allowing us.
Allow. I love the allow. Yeah, I love the word allow. This jack wagon just created this ordinance, or this, this administrative order effective on the ninth.
Yeah, effective on the ninth. It's already in effect right now. Go ahead. I hope they arrest me for recording here. We will have that dismissed with the quickness, and I will hold the other law.
Holy shit. Who do these people think they are? They're fucking out of their minds. That's these, that's the 75 and older crowd. Sorry.
Yeah, they're recording. It's a great point someone said, they're recording.
Holy shit.
Why do they get to record me without my consent?
This is, this is a trip. This is a trip. Okay. I gotta, I gotta take a break here. I gotta get a drink.
How long do you think you have till they have the meeting ends?
I don't know, just pop in there and see where they're at on the agenda. Compare, compare where they are, where they're at on the agenda. Oh, my God, I cannot get arrested. This is funny. This is just comical. I don't even know what else to make of it. This, it's just mind-blowing.
They shut the door just to make you out?
Whatever. They're, they're gonna try to bust us for disruption of public assembly or some bullshit, but the problem is, they're making up the rules as they go along, so they don't even Okay, I gotta go to my car.
Yeah.
Are you gonna be here? I'm gonna leave this...
Oh, I was gonna go outside for...
No, you go, and then I'll go.
They want me to read the paper to them.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, you guys heard. It's because it's not a public forum, guys. Public forum only means that you can't protest. Like, I couldn't bring a sign in here and start protesting, right? That's true. Like, I can't come in this area with a sign saying, "Speed trap is extortion," right? But that's all of the limited public forum is. You can't limit the freedom. They can limit my, my free press by their hours of operation in which they're open.
Right.
Or if they're having, like, some type of specific, like, event in here or something like that, and it's invite-only, then I can come in and record. That's it.
And you could technically wear a sign that says that. You could wear a shirt that says that. You could do that. Can you come in here and rally? No.
I'm not gonna read the whole paper, guys. It's a long thing, but you heard what he said. Basically, what this says is what the city manager emerges, so do you see what I'm saying? The city of Sheridan, I think, is versed in lakeside.
Well, yeah, they want to double down now.
Look at them, they're doubling.
Oh, lakeside's, lakeside's bad. I, I didn't, I didn't expect this. I didn't think these people were that stupid, but they are, so...
Okay, guys, I'm gonna see if they're gonna arrest us today, because we're gonna, I'm gonna come back here. I'll come back here with Reagan.
I can't get arrested, so you need to come with people that can get arrested with you.
She can't get arrested anymore.
I'm maxed out on my arrests for a 12-month period?
I'm gonna go back and revise this. I thought one of them came in.
Huh? In my mind.
Oh, my, I'm like, what? No way. I'm like, wait, I'm on the three-strike clock or something? I'm like, geez, am I gonna hang here or something?
I'm a three-strike, I'm a three-strike felon for disruption of government operations. Okay, are you done? Are you going back out? Have you gone to your car?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be right back.
They're getting closer. We have an agenda. So this is our wrap, and we are at... Right here. So we still have this, and this, and this, and at the end, we're gonna get to talk and address what the city manager just said. It's a disgrace, man. It doesn't give government very much credibility, and they all swear about, "Double Constitution." They're so quick to just make up some rule, because they don't like us for making them record, because we're making them work. Ooh, gee, that's why. I've done so many videos in the city of Sheridan, guys, countless, more than any other news I do, because they can't get their shit together, and they can't do it right. It's ridiculous, man. So stick with us, guys, and we're gonna get the big sister, and go back in there and address tyrants, city managers, as well. He can allow us, or he's allowing me to record, but now I can't record in here anymore. Apparently, I'm already in violation right now of their stupid new thing that they just put up. So it's just, it's ridiculous. It'd be so much easier to just do their job right, right? Like, if they don't like wanting here, how about you just give me the public records request when I request them, instead of ignoring them for several months and then... They want to do it the hard way, and they want to keep pushing back and fighting this. It's just that I can't believe that. So I don't have to follow a rule. That's not law. I don't have to follow the law. What do they get charged with, what's the common for recording? Thank you, Mr. ... I can't believe they, I can't believe they would do that. Pure retaliation, guys. Pure retaliation, it's always. They don't like, they don't like free Americans. They should all be fired. Nobody should be working over their joke or...
I only have a couple things to say at the next public comment.
So Armack's gonna come get us when they're starting to close, and right now, they're at, I'll tell you, show you where they're at. Here. So we still have a couple of, yeah, I told them to come get us when he's up there.
They're on agenda, item 12. Okay.
12, subsection 1.
So they're, so they're telling us that new, new rule. We can't be in here at all if they want us.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, I'm already in violation of the rule right now.
Yeah.
So you have to be... Yeah, like I said, arrest me.
So you have to be 25...
What would be the crime? Arrest me.
There is no crime. They're gonna try to cite us with trespassing, is what they're gonna try to do.
Trespass, you have to commit a crime in public property, so that's ridiculous.
They're gonna, they're gonna try to say it's disorderly conduct, government interference, government operations. That's where he's going with this. I can already, I already know what that stupid attorney told him, and that's why he drafted this. He's trying to tell him how to go the roundabout way to drum up charges on people, so...
If Hayashi is an attorney, he should know where this is.
Yeah, this guy's an idiot.
Is he that incompetent?
He clearly isn't. You know what? It's not uncommon... You know what, it's not uncommon for these, for these attorneys that work for the cities. They know nothing about civil rights. Absolute fucking-lutely nothing. So, they give them the shittiest advice, and they run with it. Look at that guy. He's fucking seventy-five years old, he don't give a shit. He doesn't know his head from a hole, his ass from a hole in the ground.
He was absolutely confident. Now, we spoke with Hayashi about it, and, uh...
Go for it, 'cause look what's gonna happen. There are gonna be a shit-ton of people that now converge on Sheridan because of what they just did. Why would you do that? Why would you do that as a city?
I hope, I just told my viewers, it would be much easier if they would just follow the law, just give me the damn record.
Well, yeah, there is that, too.
Why couldn't they just do that? But, no, they wanna continue to just push back and push back and violate the law. They are the criminals. They are the ones in violation of the law, not us.
Where would the attorney stand on that, as far as getting that information for you to force the issue?
Hey, everybody, how's it going?
So, if your attorney was to approach it, right?
This is a trip, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, to get that request that they won't give you. You know, I'm sure, can't he just push it to a point that...
He's not gonna do anything that I'm already doing. I'm gonna have to rely on this.
Put your cellphone on the door. Put your... Reagan, read your text. Oh, okay, sorry. I gotta get off the program.
That's pretty wild, I've never seen anything like that, you guys. I've never seen anybody just write shit in like that. I mean, seems like some real corporate kinda shit.
I don't know who's protesting. City Council's protesting this right now? Should we go listen?
Yeah, I say we go back in there. Protest him.
Okay, but I probably should use the restroom, but go ahead, I'll be okay. This guy's so nice over here. He's so helpful. Oh, but I can't use the restroom, it's locked. Is that upstairs?
Yeah, it's on the public restroom downstairs, it's locked.
Okay. All right, well, I'll just skip the restroom. It's nothing new for me. Just skip the restroom.
I have a question. You know, what if, because they're saying five feet from the other door.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. He has no authority what the hell goes on out there on the sidewalk.
Stand at the entrance and watch them all leave and video that?
Yeah, and he's saying that if you, um, stand in any other driveways or any of that kinda stuff, what an idiot. He's just asking for a protest.
Yes.
Yes.
Stane?
Yes.
Stanel?
Yes.
Yeah, Ryder, Turner?
Yes.
Captain Spidiger?
Yes.
Next night, we have Mayor's Choice. Wanted to just share the privilege of working with the Tremayers Caucus on a build at Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity at the Aria Development, which is up at Fifty-second and Federal. Has all the same street names as Sheridan, who is the... I was working on Decatur Street, which is, you know, interesting. Interesting, but, yeah. And it was a great day. I spent the day up on the scaffolding, putting up siding. For us, yeah.
How many units are they doing in there?
Sorry?
How many units they're doing?
Oh, it's, it's not as big as ours. I wanna say it's like between twenty-five and thirty. So, it's a pretty large development, but not, not as massive as Sheridan's. Yeah, but it's a, it's an interesting area. I guess they have some existing, I don't know if it's residential treatment, but there's some other, like, associated facilities in the area and apartments that I think are, like, clean living, so they're kinda building in the midst of that area. But anyway, it was nice to get out there, hang out with some of the other mayors, and have a day of providing hands-on service, because I feel like a lot of the times, I spend my time just using my brain, not much hands-on stuff, so it's just, it's refreshing. And that's, you know, I had other things I was gonna share, but other people already shared them. Took away all my announcements, so, um, I'll just say, um, thanks again to everybody who worked on the budget, since we're done with that now. Thank you again for all your work and for keeping us, um, us going in the right direction, always financially, both you, Devin, and all our staff.
Teresa does the heavy lifting on that. She was having a...
That's all I have. Anybody else have something you wanna bring up?
I was at the Arapoc County Transportation Forum. Um, just wanted to ask, Devin, did you get the minutes and what have you from that?
I think I got them, you mailed them out earlier today, I haven't looked at them yet.
Okay. Look at them.
Okay.
Because one of the things that we discussed was RTV, you know, they're going through kind of a facelift and kind of a redo, and... Try and fix this, basically, you know, where they've, they've kind of struggled for the last couple of years. And, um, they're, one of the things that they're going to be doing is similar to the Dr. Kogtip process. And have, they have a committee that they've already gotten together that are gonna be looking at different projects and plans. And one of them that was very interesting was any new, um, bus routes or, um, shuttle routes would be, uh, granted. They would do an eighty-twenty split. So, my wheels started turning, thinking, oh... Because I believe that Inglewood spends about three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars on that trolley, the Art Bus.
It's been a while since I looked at that, but...
Well, I, and I think it's even in the, the package, so...
Okay.
But, um, and I asked, so if Sheridan and Inglewood would go together and do...
Where's the attorney's...
Add to the, to the route? Would that be an addition? Would that be considered new? And they were like, no, that would be considered a new, uh, bus route. If we could expand into River Point and maybe even into Sheridan.
That's the other guy, or one of his attorneys.
And then, I'm thinking that Inglewood would love to do something like that, because then they would, would be an eighty-twenty split. That we could share that twenty percent, right?
That's what you're saying.
Can you, um, just check into that? It was, it was really exciting to me. I thought, oh, wow, this could be a way to get that, um, that bus to come over into River Point, that we talked about many, many times.
So, how far along are they on this right now?
I believe they do have committee members.
Yeah.
Sheridan's ready to go, and they'll probably be starting that buses the first few years.
We need this question to record him. Where's...
I think we should be right in there, they're asking money, get us a trolley, or whatever they call it.
I could add to that. Um, we've been down this road a couple times with Inglewood. We gotta make sure Inglewood's on the, on line with it.
Oh, I think they would be.
The last time, I think, the city looked at it, because Inglewood basically had to come up with a hundred thousand dollars to get there started. So, we gotta find out.
Yeah.
If they're interested in it, or do we just do our own?
Right.
And so, I, I know you're excited about it, so don't be surprised if Inglewood's not excited.
Granberry?
I, I think they would be, because it would be a...
Well, I understand.
RTV would pay eighty percent of the cost, and then we would...
But I understand, but we need to make sure that they're all...
Twenty, so... Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We'll have time for this city council to deal with that city council, and see where they're at.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll make sure to be explored, we'll delve into it and explore that and see, you know, can we identify that there might be some benefit for them out of that, if we were to expand, uh, that existing route.
And the only other thing, Devin, was that, um, meeting for Thursday of January.
I saw that, thank you, yes.
That's all I've got. Thank you. Anybody else have anything you wanna bring up?
I do.
What?
Long Oxford on the north side, um, where we put in the bike path for the Trailhead. The weeds are need height to the... All sailor. Anyway, they're, they're tall over there. Is that our responsibility to clean that up in there, or is it Inglewood's? Also, the golf course, in front of the golf course on the north side is a mess. Dead trees, I mean, the trees are dead and the weeds are tall.
On the north side, on the north side, okay.
The north side of Oxford, right in front of, right in front of basically all the golf course.
Okay.
You know, the weeds underneath the sign where it says Trailhead is a bit bad. It's, looks bad.
We'll, we'll look at that. I wanna see, maybe it's Oxford, but, you know, is it, is it all, is it all where it is?
I was also informed...
Okay.
That the streetlights are out between Hills and Grove on March. That's it.
Thank you. But, just to remind you, I did wanna ask about the concrete buckle by Valentine. Does we have any ETA? Okay. Any else? We have one more opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to council, you have three minutes, kind of...
Go first.
Oh, okay. You're gonna hold this? Okay, this is awesome, we get round two. Uh, Mr. Granberry, I, we've never even seen you. What do we, where did you come from with this administrative order? Are you an administrative court judge? You think you're dealing with a bunch of stupid people, don't you? Guess what? I see that you guys are going into executive session to do his evaluation. I'm gonna tell y'all right now, you better fire him while you're ahead, because actually, you're gonna need all of that revenue from the red light camera to settle these civil rights lawsuits that you're gonna get. I mean, this guy is out of his mind. And if that attorney gave him that advice, you also need to fire him and ask for a refund. And so, when you go in for your evaluation tonight, I hope you get fired, because we're coming back. You know that, right? And if you just do your damn job, we wouldn't even be here. Do you get that? We have the right to record our government on duty, whether you like it or not. So, we're coming back. You get that, right? And we don't need anybody's permission. So, you better get with your buddy right there, 'cause you're gonna have to arrest a whole bunch of people that don't leave. You get that? Better yet, just make sure your staff's doing their damn job, and we won't even be here. You know why we're here, right? 'Cause your staff's not doing their job. You hear that? They're not doing their job. And I'm so glad that all of you realize that you are elected to represent the people and not the government. Administrative order? Whatever. That's, that's how you lose respect. Don't, you not get that? That's how you lose respect and bring more people that know you're up to no good. You want to hide. Why do you wanna hide? What are you hiding from? Aren't you transparent? Answer the damn records request, Martinez, and we wouldn't even be here. Don't you get that? Talk to me. Come on, Granberry, talk to me.
Administrative order speaks for itself.
Tell us why you think you can do it. Tell us what authority you have to enforce it. Tell us how much money this...
Administrative order speaks for itself.
How much money does this city have to settle civil rights lawsuits? Not much, huh? You ready for that? 'Cause that's what's gonna happen. You guys ready for that? Granberry, you need to be fired tonight, I'm telling you. Fire him while you are ahead and while the city still has money. 'Cause this dude is gonna bankrupt this whole town. I'm telling you. Y'all love your festivals and all that fun stuff? You better fire this dude.
Thank you for your feedback. Anyone else who'd like to speak to the council?
Yes, ma'am, right here. Mr. Granberry, did you swear an oath of the Constitution?
I'll just remind everyone, you don't have to respond to people who are writing public comments.
Well, you did. Mr. Martinez, if I were to come back here, 'cause I'm going to, I'm recording this public area right here, well, are you going to arrest me for that?
No, come here.
Yeah, because there, in order to arrest me, you, I, I have to have broken the law. So, this, this administrative order is not a law. It's a rule. Anyone can put any rule, no red shirts, right? I don't have to abide by that. And, Mr. City Manager, you said that we allow you to record. You don't allow me to do anything, sir. I have the right to record.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, you need to understand that. You, you work for me, sir.
Amen.
Okay? You don't allow me nothing, okay? I have natural rights. The Constitution protects my natural rights. First Amendment, you know, we have the press, pesky little thing, the thing that you swore an oath to protect, right? So, Mr. Martinez, Mr. City Manager, it doesn't give you guys very much credibility when you swear an oath to uphold the United States Constitution, and then you're over here with this administrative order, trying to violate our rights as free American citizens? Right? Government is the epitome of do as I say, not as I do. All right? So, I'm just wondering, what would be the crime? 'Cause I know Mr. Martinez, he doesn't wanna talk to me. But, we're gonna come back. I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably bring as many people, 'cause a lot of people are gonna wanna get in on this.
Yep.
Uh, we're gonna come back in a group, and we're gonna come in here and record. And this administrative order is not a law. So, we will be back. If you decide, if Mr. Martinez or whoever arrests us, I already have an attorney on, on retainer. We'll have that dismissed very easily. I don't even need to hire an attorney. I could probably do this by myself, pro se. And then, we will sue the city of Sheridan. And whoever puts the handcuffs on me, I will sue them, him too, personally. There's no qualified immunity in Colorado. It wouldn't matter anyways, 'cause once you violate some of these rights, you don't get qualified immunity. So, like my sister said, I hope that you think real long and hard. And, and you do, this Hayashi guy, what kind of credibility does he have to draft up this administrative order? He's obviously not a constitutional attorney. He, he needs to be fired. He doesn't, I don't think he knows what he's doing. I know he doesn't know what he's doing. I do this for a living. I know my rights. If you guys would just honor, just follow the law and give me the records that I'm requesting, we wouldn't even be here.
Yep.
You guys are perpetuating this. It's a disgrace. You guys need to do better.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to council tonight? Anybody online? If you would like to speak online, go ahead and raise your hand, put your information in the chat. Not seeing any at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Can I, let's see. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session? The motion is in there.
I'll make a motion to adjourn for executive session.
Can you give the whole?
I sure can. After this meeting, the discussion of personal matters under CRS Section Twenty-four dash six dash four zero two, the parentheses two, pertaining to the yearly elevates, elevate, elevate, I can't even say it, emails of the city manager and city clerk.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilmember Smith and seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion on that motion? Do we need a vote on it, or does, should we get a vote, please? Um... Sure.
So, hey, they're gonna go into executive session, and then they'll come back out and end the meeting?
Yes.
Stane?
Yes.
Stanel?
Yes.
Yeah, Ryder, Turner?
Yes.
Captain Spidiger?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Adam Spidiger?
Thank you. We will adjourn this meeting. The time is eight-twenty PM. Thanks, everybody, for joining us tonight.
Oh, wait a minute.
So, it's over.
There, you're supposed to come back out after executive session.
Do we wanna take a five-minute break? Reagan mean?
Hmm. That's not...
I'd be questioning the sunshine law violation on that one. They can't end a meeting to go into executive session. They have to end the meeting after executive session. I understand what executive session is, but they can't end the night's meeting until they're done meeting, so they usually come back out and end the meeting after executive session? But I'm not saying they do much right here. So... Nobody was online for public comment, apparently. They could go into executive session for personnel matters. But I'm gonna ask process question here. So the meeting's over, so technically, we're not supposed to be recording per his administrative order, so what's he gonna do about it now? The meeting's over. Meeting's over, huh?
We're in violation right now of their order, guys. It's their rule.
They just adjourned the meeting. Wow, they just opened up a giant can of, unnecessarily opened up a giant can of worms. All they had to do was listen to us, comply with the records request, and we would have never been back.
Yeah. You know, they, they obviously have disdain of the city manager and chief police over there. They can't stand us, right?
They apparently run the place. A specific number?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. Apparently, the city numbers their requests. I don't know if you got a number on that request. I've never gotten a number on any of my requests. This, so she's the clerk, so she's trying to tell him not to talk.
Maybe Mr. Whitaker, he's kind of-
Call him up. You, you can have, a citizen can have a conversation with them off the record. So you are free to talk to that man, as long as he's willing to talk to you, since they ended the meeting.
Mr. Whitaker, I never was given a, a records number.
Because he doesn't want to face sentry by his councilmates for not following Robert's rules of orders during the meeting.
And finally, when we came down here on November 7th, he reached out to me the next day. But like I said, he's saying that the reason why the request is denied is because, number one, my signature's not legible. That's ridiculous. I understand you have to sign for penary gain, but who's he to say that my signature's not legible? My signature could be any else scribbled. And then they said I have to show ID, so... Like I said, CRS 24-72-201 states that all public records shall be open for inspection by any person. So like, there's certain states, like Virginia, where you have to be a resident of that state to obtain public records. So you have to show ID. But Colorado's not that, that way, so I've got records requests all across the state for the last year and a half. Oh, well, the reason why I don't.
No, you wouldn't have to provide an ID. You know what's missing, though, Mr. Whitaker? Are the city's policies. As council members, have you asked the city manager what the town's policies are in regards to records? There are nuances in the law that allows the city to set processes. But you guys have already set- Yes, yes. But you guys have already set precedent, because I can get records here. I've never had to show ID. Nobody knows who I am. Why is that? It's because you guys don't have good policy.
If the policy was that you had to show ID or something, to get records, would you abide by that?
No, I wouldn't. And here's why. Because it is public information, and I could challenge that in district court, because the, the intent of the law is not for the city to withhold records, because they've defined a process that the courts would frown upon. It's the spirit of the law, transparency.
She's asking us to leave, she said.
We have an executive session.
In this room?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Hope you get fired. Hope you fire him. While you're ahead. There's gonna be about 50 more of us coming back. Because of the invitation, Cranberry. You are a rock star, and we are all very grateful for you tonight. And you've been cordial and respectful and have been nothing but helpful. Thank you very, very much.
Make yourself look good on camera.
Yeah. No, I think he makes himself look good, period, because I think that's probably his demeanor. This place is bad news. And I expect, in the next few months, there'll be a metal detector, there's gonna be a whole new process to walk into this building. Because they're afraid. This is their first step to showing how afraid they are. Why are they leaving the door open for an executive session? So we're recording, we're in the city government building, the meeting is over, and we're still recording. Fire him. Well, we're still recording. Reagan's, this guy rocks. You rock.
Right on, man.
You did a good job.
And the other, the other lady here, that I always-
Whoa, look at this new sign. "Audio or video recording within this area without the consent of all persons who are being recorded is prohibited." Where's your legal citation there, Mr. City Manager dumbass?
There's no law about it, it's just a piece of paper.
"Attention, City Hall visitors. The use of any audio or video recording device within city council chambers, conference rooms, or other locations inside City Hall in which a public meeting is not being conducted, or with any areas of City Hall designated as city employee work areas, without the consent of all persons whose voice or image is being recorded, is prohibited. This prohibition does not apply to law enforcement activities related to enforcing the law or investigating possible violations of the law." What law? "Any person found to be conducting audio and/or video recording must cease doing so immediately if any visitor, city employee, or city official expresses a desire not to be recorded. Any person who refuses to cease the unconsented to video and/or sound recording will be reported to the city manager, or such persons designate as a disruption of city business and will be deemed to no longer be present within City Hall on legitimate public business." And will be deemed to no longer be present within City Hall on legitimate public business." This idiot is literally putting in writing that he's going to kick people out of here that are doing legitimate business.
Yeah. He's not too great.
Oh, this is a, this is a whopper. This one's a whopper. Reagan, do me a favor. Go in there and let them know we're recording, and there's no meeting going on. This is a violation of the law. Can you send somebody an email, a text? Hey, all those people are still out here recording. There's no meeting.
Not a problem.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I'll text them.
Reagan, thank you very, very much. Yeah, you do the same.
Hey, can you see the video? Can you see the video?
Which one?
So that's, his name is Reagan, and he, he works with the city clerk's office. And he was real helpful with, for us the other day. So he's gonna, he's gonna send them a text and let them know that we're out here recording. And perhaps, we're gonna just wait until they're done with their executive session.
Guys, so we're gonna see, we're gonna stay here recording and see what they do.
And see if-
See if they're gonna arrest us, or what's gonna happen.
And if they're talking about that in executive session, that's against the law. Cheers.
Yeah, so we're gonna, let's do a public records request for this entire, can we do that for the executive session, or no? No?
Nope. That's why we're gonna see how long they're in there.
So stay tuned, guys. Thanks for, for being here with us. We'll see if they're gonna try to arrest me or what they're gonna do.
So... I have to be threatened with a citation or arrest before I'll retreat.
Okay, I'll just take the arrest, and can you bond me out?
All right. Yeah, whoever gave these super chats tonight, thank you very much.
Go back and check it out. Loose cunt said how much of a badass you are.
DJ Plas, I think you're gonna hear from the public in the morning. You guys, your comments were rich during Betty Cracker's Funapalooza extravaganza presentation.
There it is. Oh, it was Dan. Dan, oh, I can never pronounce your name either. Never, brother. Great display, you're right, thank you. Yeah, I saw that, I didn't, I couldn't talk yet, because it was quiet. Thank you, guys, all for the super chats. Thank you, everyone, for coming in to support Mrs. Guy. And you guys saw it, you guys heard. They're in clear violation of the law, clear violation of the First Amendment. They're, they're criminals, they're crooks, guys.
They are.
They're absolute crooks. First of all, they're violation of CCJRA laws, right? Which, again, like Reagan says, the CCJRA laws operate very loosely, but-
Oh, we had-
A district court judge is not gonna think that three months is an acceptable, reasonable amount of time to wait for a response on a CCJRA. That's ridiculous.
We had somebody signed up to speak in there, online, and they ignored him.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Who was it?
Let's see, he goes by, uh... Uh, who was that? Was that Soy? Was that you? Yeah, Soy signed up to speak. He raised his hand, and they blew me off.
Wow. James Jefferson.
Did you get any screenshots of that? Always take screenshots, guys.
Do you guys remember Armack? Remember the guy that was with me during the Terry Giglio thing?
Yeah, that was the crazy guy.
Oh, another $10.
The recent piece wearing in the bustle is because he was exposed.
That was very nice.
So that's why he's here.
So they're giving out free COVID tests here, too. Taking all four of them that they're giving out, might as well.
Getting free COVID tests, you know, because everything's free.
I call it the C-
Except for recording and the First Amendment. Then you're not, you don't be taking any of that shit.
That's funny, because they talk about official business and that sign that they wrote. This is official business.
It is official business. We're waiting for the records request.
And, and guys, I can come in here every single day for the rest of my life, from the time they open until they close, and see if I can record.
Hey, did anybody listen to this part of the gen, agenda, when they set the salary for the municipal court judge?
Which, which part of that is it?
This one right here.
Uh, that's actually, no. That was like right when I was about to get you on.
Was it? So this guy has been a judge here in Sheridan since 1975. He's been the municipal court judge since 1975. I want to know what the salary was. Did anybody catch it? Is anybody listening?
I did not catch it.
We were outside, I think, when they were doing that, so we didn't catch it.
I doubt they even talked about it, because I, when we walked in, they were voting. So I don't think they even had discussion on it.
You could tell, though, Granberry, when they were going over this stuff here, there was a lot of questions going on, and he had twice during the whole discussion, had to have them repeat what he was, repeat what they were saying. And said twice, he was like, sorry, my head is in other spaces right now.
He said that on the record. Granberry said, my head is in other spaces.
Two times. And they actually did, they actually did come out and shut the door here, because you guys were being a little bit loud.
Yeah.
But he did stand up, and he said, I don't have a problem with you shutting the door, just need to make sure that it's not locked, so they can get in.
Who said that?
Granberry said the same thing. He's like, he tested, he's like, it is locked, so we do need to open it back up. But then they went into that, and that's where he had talked two times, saying that his head was in other spaces. You can tell he was, he was definitely a little shook by it.
He's out of his mind. He is out of his mind. Devon Granberry, city manager.
Cranberry.
Cranberry.
Cranberry, that was perfect.
It's for Thanksgiving. Hey, Cranberry, can you sauce it up for us?
His name is Cranberry from now on, guys. We're not calling him Granberry, he's Cranberry.
Well, there's no threatening of arrest here on this, though. And, and I love their wording, so it may constitute a disruption of city business.
They emphasized that, too, when they were reading it, yeah.
Yeah. What is, what is a disruption of city business? When they can't do their fucking job?
Yeah, that's-
Is that a, that's a disruption of my time? And so, let's, let's read the beginning of this about what it means to be outside as well. Okay? So, and by the way, Sheridan is a home rule, a home rule city, and so they do stuff like this in Colorado. I love local control, but this is where things get really hanky, is with the Home Rule Charter, and so is Lakeside. That's why Lakeside runs rogue, like they do. And so these little towns, they run rogue. So, here we go. "In accordance with the authority granted to the city manager..." So for those of you questioning whether this guy can write this administrative order, he can. He can do this. He's not trying to put it into ordinance or have the city council discuss it. He's the boss man. So he runs the city how he sees fit. So he can make all these rules all day long. He's not an administrative court judge. The word administrative order just sounds really important. So, "This order sets forth reasonable rules and regulations applicable to the use of the entryway, inside lobby, and reception areas, council chambers, conference rooms, or other locations inside City Hall in which a public meeting is not being conducted, or other areas of Sheridan City Hall designated as city employee work areas, which are quote-unquote non-public forum." They love those words. Non-public forum. "These rules are necessary to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of city council chambers and other administrative, administrative offices located inside Sheridan City Hall, safeguard employee safety, maintain emergency access and evacuation routes, and to preserve methods of ingress and egress for the general public to attend city council meetings." Meaning, don't block the door. Don't block the aisles. That's pretty much it. "Municipal court proceedings or other city, or other city of Sheridan public meetings occurring inside city council chambers." Boy, they must really be expecting us to hit up some meetings inside those council chambers.
Yeah, I think we start going to every one.
I mean, we literally just walked in there the other day, when we were here, just so we could see where we were. The door was open, there was no meeting going on. And this Cranberry dude, he has never once shown his face, ever, in all the times we've been here. They are really pissed off at you, because you are hitting hard on photo radar. They're pissed. They're pissed.
We're taking, we're taking money out of their caucus and putting it back into the citizen.
And all they're doing is bringing more attention to it now. More and more and more. Hey, if you want to pay those, go ahead. But know that you should seek legal advice, and that legal advice will tell you, no, you don't have to pay those, but be aware of these things. You have to be served in person. "And to otherwise safely access the public restroom facilities inside Sheridan City Hall and the reception lobby area." Why, because, so I asked to use the restroom once, when we were here, and they unlocked it, didn't they?
Yeah, because they were doing tile downstairs numbers, so they, they unlocked it for you.
Yeah, because I asked the clerk when we were doing business, and she was very cordial and polite about it, had no problem doing it. I went in there, I did exactly what my business called for. I didn't graffiti the walls, I didn't mess up the bathroom. I'm wondering if they're having an issue with homeless folks coming in here trying to use the restroom as well. Same thing with Inglewood, right? This is the same shit we saw in Inglewood, with Sean Lewis making that administrative order, telling people that they were gonna have like a three-strikes thing. You could, you can't come in the building with body odor. It does get worse. It gets worse than this. Inglewood, right across the street, their city manager drafted this thing that said if you have bugs or you smell, you'll, you'll get a warning, and then you're in a tier system, they keep track of people that they warn on a tier system. And when you get to tier three, you get a 365-day suspension from the building. I shit you up. It's really happening. It's, this shit is really happening. This is America, in our land of the free. "As such, the following activities are not permitted inside the aforementioned areas of Sheridan City Hall: handing out leaflets, flyers, or other written publications." This right here, this circulation of petitions to collect signatures, oh, he's, they're playing with fire on that one. "Petitioning on behalf of candidates for elected office." That's another iffy one. "Public demonstrations, which shall mean a rally, a gathering of picketers or protesters, a speech, a march, or any other similar gathering for the purpose of communication or expression of ideas, views, or grievances, will not be allowed." So essentially, us telling Reagan, you know, what we're doing and us telling that guy, you know, we appreciate you, we can't express our views. You get that?
Yeah.
You're not allowed to speak, period.
Yeah, we're in North Korea, guys.
"Soliciting funds, donations, or services, picketing, placing or erecting tables, exhibits, chairs, kiosks, and other structures for displaying or storing literature, fundraising activities, petitioning, selling or offering merchandise, solicitation, or conducting any of the aforementioned activities, and, last but not least, number eight, the use of any audio or video recording device without the consent of all persons whose voice or image is being recorded."
And.
That's a new one.
Colorado is a one-party state. That means that one person can video and audio record without the other person's knowledge or consent. So that's, I mean, I just can't believe that Bill Hayashi is that uneducated, that ignorant of the law. He's an attorney. I mean, why? Why do you have so much disdain? Why are you trying to put a veil on our rights to get public records?
Did he say, did he say that Hayashi drafted this or?
He said, "On, on, on advice of our city attorney," he did say that.
On advice?
I don't know if he said he drafted it or not. I think he did draft it though. But he did say, when he was talking and we were right up next to him, that, yeah, that, under advice, I think he said, of our city attorney.
And then he, they have the balls to put this in writing, "Consistent with First Amendment protections." The aforementioned.
Doesn't make any sense.
The aforementioned activities may be conducted on public sidewalks adjacent to Sheridan City Hall grounds or outside of Sheridan City Hall, provided that the activity must remain 25 feet from all public entrances to Sheridan City Hall and those engaged in the activity are not blocking, interfering, or impeding on the rights of others to freely enter and exit Sheridan City Hall and otherwise conduct business with Sheridan City Hall, regardless of distance from the entrances. "Further, those engaged in the aforementioned activities outside Sheridan City Hall shall not occupy or block fire or emergency lanes and access, shall not occupy parking spaces." So we can't even park.
Oh, we're not allowed to park in the parking lot?
I wonder what, I wonder what a real attorney would feel like reading this.
"And must stay clear of traffic lanes and vehicular entrances. Any person who fails to comply with this administrative order shall be served with a copy of this administrative order and may, may be ordered to vacate Sheridan City Hall premises. Refusal to vacate Sheridan City Hall premises after being ordered, ordered, who gets to order to do so, pursuant to this administrative order, may constitute a disruption of city business and will be deemed to no longer be present within Sheridan City Hall on legitimate public business."
Doesn't make sense. Basically says, if you, if you don't, if you're here recording and you don't leave, then you're going to be asked, and you don't leave after asked to leave, then they're going to, we're going to re-ask you to leave. That's what they're saying. They're not saying you're going to be arrested or charged with any CRS. They're just, they're just reiterating what they already said. You're going to ask.
Well, and shall constitute a trespass under the Colorado revised statutes and the City of Sheridan Municipal Code. I'd love for them to trespass me from being able to attend this public meeting.
Well, he said that you can record in here. He said, "No," didn't say that we can. He said, "He's allowing us to record in the city council meeting."
Allowing. I loved it. You hit it. You don't allow me to do anything.
The audacity these guys have.
Devon Granberry.
Cranberry, Cranberry.
AKA Cranberry. This is a trip. So they didn't like us recording all the new cop cars out there the other day.
Right.
Made them look stupid. So you can't do that anymore. You can't even park out there. I'm going to have to quit shopping at Riverpoint.
Charlie, we're, we won't lose the paper.
Yeah, I'm going to have to quit shopping at Riverpoint because they're collecting sales tax from me. So if you do shopping at Riverpoint, half of it's Inglewood, half of it's.
Right.
Sheridan.
Uh, the PetSmart, that, that one, PetSmart is Sheridan, huh?
I think it might be.
It's right next to Target.
You've spent a lot of money at PetSmart.
Well, because my, my more pees they get, that's their groomer over there.
Better find a new groomer.
I can't. She's the one. She's.
Well, work a deal with her and pay her cash. Tell her you bring the dogs to her house.
Maybe I could do that. It's crazy, man. This guy's a clown, man. I mean, I've never seen anything like that. Just a, just a manager to write up something. Reagan, I got a question. If they come out here and say that we have to leave, should I, if they trespass me, should I leave after the trespass or should I need them arrested?
I cannot answer that for you.
I'm not answering, but just give me some advice. What should I do? Should I just take the ticket and then leave or should I make them throw me in handcuffs?
I'm not going to answer that for you.
Guys in the chat, if they come out and trespass me, should I take the ticket and then leave? That's a one for that, or should I make them arrest me, two for that? We got a lot of ones. We got one, two. Oh, I thought more even gets to a two. Ones. There's definitely more ones than twos. Okay, guys, so I.
Everybody loves it. When everybody goes to jail. It's fucking hilarious. Everybody gets to sit back and laugh and go, oh, yay.
Well, I mean.
Going to jail, so much fun.
But, um, sometimes I think it's better to take the actual arrest, but threat of, I mean, it's not like I would be threat of arrest and I leave. I mean, they're still going to give me a ticket because I'm not going to leave unless they trespass me. So. But I do have, you know, I do still have, guys, the, my Social Security Administration case that I'm working on, so it is nice to not have to, like Reagan says, she can't get arrested anymore, to not have to pile on. I like to work on one civil liberties, um,
I didn't, I didn't plan on getting arrested in a row.
I want to keep getting arrested over and over and, you know, it's difficult when you have several cases you're working on at the same time, so. Right, no, Salty, I know you don't want Reagan to see you arrested. She's just saying, I mean, it makes for better content when someone gets arrested. People like that. And you guys already know, I'm, I'm willing to take the arrest. I did get arrested at the Social Security Administration. That was an arrest. I got just put in handcuffs, but they, they decided to just write me a ticket and let me go, so I didn't have to get bonded out of jail. But if you guys have noticed, my members, you guys notice your little emoji thing is different. It's because I updated those, so now they're based on tiers for months, how many months you've been. So the CRS one that Dan has, that's the, and the Supreme Court case law, has to be US one, that's the two-month, the two-moater. The original TMA logo is the one-moater and I think the, then we have the Give Me Five Bucks one is, that Papa Chuck has, and I guess it's three months. Or no, that's six months. No, it's three months. And then the Do Better one is six months, and then I have a one-year.
It's life blowing, isn't it? We're, we're really living it. It's really happening. And it's shocking. It's very shocking.
I'd have to double check it. There's different tiers now. But I also do have a, um, a new, some new merchandise coming out, guys. I'm probably going to be uploading it tomorrow. It's, uh, it says Just Do Better, kind of like a Nike thing, and it's the same lettering as Nike, and it's got a little Nike squish, and your finger goes up and it's pointing.
Oh, that sounds cool.
It says Just Do Better, so it's going to be my new merch coming out. I'll put a little thing on my community tab when I get that launched, hopefully tomorrow.
Oh, wow. I don't know who that was that sent John those Pyrex baking pans. Um, it wasn't Amanda, but whoever sent that, thank you very, very much. Um, somebody sent John some pans that he needed.
Guys, I'm going to have to swap out my battery and my big camera.
And that was very much appreciated because we use that stuff today. Well, I went to go get John this morning for a medical procedure that has been scheduled, a serious medical procedure. Get him over to Denver Health at a quarter to seven in the morning, and they're like, "Why are you here?" I'm like, "He's scheduled for surgery." They're like, "Nope, it was canceled." Poor John.
They canceled his surgery?
Yeah.
Not even telling him? Oh, because they cannot have a way to get a hold of him?
Well, they claimed that, they claimed to have called his caseworker and his cell phone, and they didn't. Yeah, Denver Health. Don't recommend it, for a long list of reasons, that being just one of them.
You know what? I, I thought maybe that I was striking a chord with the mayor, but I don't know anymore after she was talking to us. I think she can't stand us either.
Too bad.
I got that too. She didn't care. She didn't give a shit about us.
It's because they, that's why I hate doing these meetings, because they think it's their job to protect government. They think it's their job to protect all the city workers, from the people. It's got to, the division has to be there.
Just like this guy right here. You know how sick and tired I am of seeing these thick bulletproof glass looking things, little speaker there? They're, what they're doing is they create a division between us.
I'm going to be right back.
You go to the bathroom?
Yeah, I'm going to go use the restroom.
I'll, I'll talk to your chat.
Yeah, you talk.
Alright, guys. Alright, guys, so we had Anthony D Hill over here. He came to support us. He's been coming to a lot of our stuff now at Armack, and we got, um, Zach downstairs. So, so I am doing both live streams again. Yeah. You think they're back there watching my live, Bobby? I doubt it. Yeah, they want division. Let's see, Reagan's way behind in her chat. Walter Cowell's way down there. Uh, Bob Lau, thanks for the 10 for, for Big Sister. James Jefferson, thank you for the two for Big Sisters. Stand. And I appreciate you guys. I think I'm better than her at, oh, what's up MLH in the house? Uh, paying attention to the chat, guys, so, sorry if she missed your, um, your super chat. Uh, it's good to see you in here, Salty. I haven't seen you in a while, man. Glad you're back. Johnny Bravo in the house, what up, dog? So, we'll see, guys, what they're going to do. If they're going to trespass me out of here or what. Suzie, what's up, Suzie? Uh, Joe, what's up, Joe? Thank you, uh, Ake Artist. What's up?
What do you think the chances are of him getting fired tonight?
Uh, the city, the city manager?
Cranberry, yeah.
Oh, Cranberry?
Yeah.
They're not going to fire him.
Yeah.
No.
It seemed like Whitaker was maybe the only one that was kind of listening.
Right.
You know?
It did seem like Whitaker was, you know, you could tell. I'm an empath, right? So I can kind of feel energy.
Yeah.
You could tell he was like, you know, we struck a chord with him a little bit, like he was, we made him think about it.
Yeah, definitely.
You know? Well, then, you know, he says, "Oh, why not just provide your ID and, and just so you can get your records?" The reason why, guys, I don't provide ID is because, number one, the law protects me that I don't have to, and the reason is so that they can't retaliate against me, right? But see, it just goes to show the, um, the corruption here because they know my first and last name already. I never gave them my first and last name. You guys know me, I don't, I don't say my name. Um, so they already know my name. And this is just pure retaliation, guys. You know, they, they're, they're jumping, they're doing whatever they can to not give me the records, right? Saying that my signature's not legible, that's like ridiculous. And I can't even believe that, that a city attorney would say something so stupid. I mean, who is he to say my signature's not legible, right? And then they're jumping through all these hoops to not give me the records and then they want it because we're coming in here and recording and holding them accountable and making them look foolish. We're not making them look foolish, they're making themselves look so foolish. And now, instead of just doing what's right, giving us the records so that we'll be on our way and leave them alone, they want to just now make this rule up, this administrative order, says we can't record. So if they don't do anything today, guys, then we're going to come back. I'm going to, I'm going to reach out to everyone that I can and I'm going to come in here with as many people as I can, see, come in here with like 20 people, and we'll all just record and see if they're going to trespass every single one of us. I mean, that would be a huge lawsuit, a class action lawsuit, if they want to trespass all of us from here. I just, I can't believe I'm like beside myself that the city attorney, he's an attorney. Yes, uh, code, US 18, US code, title 242, deprivation of rights under color of law. I want to show you guys something. I got this. Sweetie actually printed it out for me, but I, I went and got them laminated. So I have all my laws right here, kind of like, um, ready. I have all my laws. So I can just flip through them and figure them out, figure out what I need to do. So I need to kind of make some adjustments on it because some of them don't flip that good.
One, two, three.
So let's go. Here we go, that's the one you're talking about. 242, Title 18.
These do not have my consent to.
That is not my consent. Those are cameras up there.
All these cameras. One, two, three, four, five. Uh, you don't have my consent. No, stop recording me.
Stop recording me. You're in violation of the rule. You're in violation of the rule.
Let's show everybody the cameras.
Let's show them the cameras.
These cameras do not have our consent to record us. Alright, here, hold on. There's one. There's two. There's three. Four. Five. And that's just right here.
You know what I just saw? Something? You know, it's silly. They said that we can't record here without people's consent. But I can just go do a public records request for all the security camera footage anyways, and get all the footage that I want, right? So how stupid is that?
Oh, they're going to charge you a lot for that.
But, I mean, it's okay.
So, I mean, they ended the meeting. Technically, they shouldn't have adjourned their regular meeting until after they were out of executive session. I mean, they ended the meeting. Technically, they shouldn't have adjourned their regular meeting until after they were out of executive session. Hey Tina. We're all victims here tonight. Now look at all these cameras. Nobody's got my consent to record me. That could be, that'll become a real issue if they try to enforce that with all these cameras in here.
And then that, that girl's uh, eighteen online, instead of, yeah, just hide them completely. I don't want them on here at all. No, don't time them out, just kick them out right away.
They don't have a library here, huh?
Yeah, they got Sheridan Library down the street, but uh, they're closed right now for uh, construction, they're remodeling.
Oh, that, that brand new building right over here.
It's not that brand new.
Where they pulled those people over that night?
Yeah, remember, we went into the parking lot that night, yeah. That's the library.
They're begging for some more cop watches too. Ghost says, go hold the camera at their sign again, please. Which sign, Ghost? The one on the window?
Sir Adam, DMA is the king of libraries, City Hall office. I'm, I think I'm, I might be the king of the libraries, but uh, City Hall, that's actually AFA.
Are there cameras in the chamber? Oh yes.
He has those little town, town hall ones. So these guys are coming in and we're just waiting now to see if they're gonna arrest us or what. Guys, I don't wanna get arrested, like. A lot of these, these uh, these public employees.
Hey Jessica, how are you ever since started watching me? You've recorded bunches and been asked all kinds of crap. Good.
No man, that's not what I wanna do.
Glad you're recording.
I just wanna make a living honestly on my YouTube channel, that's it. I don't wanna sue because the ceiling just comes out of the taxpayers' money, right?
Need about um, two hundred fifty dollars worth of hand warmers right now. So if you wanna give.
But I mean, I will sue if I have to.
And uh, have not sa- signed up for Amazon smiles, please do so. And order hand warmers and send them to me.
Winter's black, Mile High Autumn, Dominate.
Hey Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for addressing me as.
All the way from the UK, huh?
Sir Adam.
The one on the window, Ghost? Okay. I took a picture of it. I'll just send it to you. Ghost.
Jeter Jason in the hands, is that right?
There you go, you should have it now.
Yeah, unadoption, I don't know. They're, they're gonna have to uh, close lock these doors though.
So it's nine o'clock. We got here at seven. They're in executive session. Right now, the topic of executive session is um.
Dead, uh, they don't have qualified immunity.
Discussion of a personnel matter pertaining to yearly evaluation of the city manager and the city clerk.
Yeah, that's true. Uh, crazy warnings.
Um.
That's how you affect change.
That city clerk, that older lady, um, she's been responding to my records requests. Uh, she's rude. She's not professional at all. Oh, and here she comes as a matter of fact. Who's the recorder? Do they not adjourn their meetings after executive session? Huh, is that? Well, how would we know that though? Are they still in there? Is, is the executive session over? So we can go in the room? Okay. We're gonna go check out the room to see if this executive session ended. I've never, I've never known a meeting to adjourn. So the city clerk said we could go in there. And it's locked. So how do we know they're not in meeting anymore? Yeah, I don't like this at all. At all. That's a huge violation of the sunshine law. If they conduct business in executive session that isn't specific to that agenda item, that's a huge violation of the law. And Mr. Cranberry, um, he's asking for it. So where do they exit? I wanna know that this, this executive session is over. I have a right to know that. Do they exit out here?
Whoever said that in the chat was right, they sneak out the back door.
Yeah.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna face us. So here's the thing, guys. Let me know in the chat, if you don't think that, that they're bluffing about that, this thing, this administrative order thing? Or do you think they're just bluffing to try to scare us out of here?
I'm gonna get my two cents on that because I was already thinking about it. They're clearly bluffing or they would've came out and faced us.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
They would've came out and faced us. So that's why I think they're bluffing, guys.
Just a piece of paper with some words on it.
Yeah, anyone can write anything. Like I said, guys, in my speech, you said, you know, you can write, no red shirts. I mean, that's ridiculous. Can't just make, it's just a piece of paper. It doesn't say anything. It's not a law. Makes me kinda wanna draw a curve.
Yeah.
You know?
Be, be watching over there. So, I thought this uh. So it's open, it's open transparency laws in regards to how governments conduct meetings. So there are strict rules about going into executive session. And you can only go into exec- executive session for personnel matters and legal advice and that's it. That's it. So there have been little governments that have gotten themselves in some serious hot water over going into executive session and sitting around talking shit about like what we're doing. They can't talk about it.
Yeah, Salty, I think that could be true too. I think that they're, they honestly believe, they could honestly believe that they're in the right because like they said, they got under advice of their city attorney.
Yep.
And the city attorney that drafted this, we think, has the audacity to say, in accordance with First Amendment. In accordance with the First Amendment, we're preventing you from coming in here, trying to coerce you.
That's interesting. Nope. So the clerk comes out. So she's in there, she's got her coat on. How do we know they're done with that meeting? That door is locked. Hey.
Hey, how are you?
Good. How do we know they're done with that meeting? That door is locked.
I believe it was locked after it started, um, so it's, it's, it's locked, it's closed.
So they're still in there, meeting?
I don't believe so, no.
So they sneak out some back door?
Is there another exit from that room? So they have to come out through here? Because we haven't seen them yet, so. So they're still in there then?
That's interesting. Hmm. We're gonna time this. Thank you. Have a great night. We're gonna time this because they're still in that room. So they're in a quorum. Yeah, this is uh, really interesting. Son. So there's no other way out of that room?
Yep, that's according to Reagan. And according to Bryce as well.
Your name is Bryce? That's my middle son's name. How sweet is that?
That's a, a good question to say.
Huh?
That's a good question to say.
Yes, it is. He's also a nice young man.
I don't like the young part anymore, but.
Oh, you look pretty young, bro.
I, I'll bet you're younger than my son.
I'm thirty, sure.
Oh, that's not old, bro.
You're younger than my oldest son.
You feel old at thirty already?
So they're still in there. Their executive session is over. Yeah, this is a problem.
I started noticing like, makes some paintings more and stuff like that. Not bad, right? That's why I always describe my painting at thirties, the same as like, you're calling eight hundred thousand miles. It still runs great, it just requires more maintenance.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely good analogy.
Yeah.
That's also like you see, like doing things like move my knees down, my, my joints.
Listen for money in handcuffs.
Seen on, uh, that's starting to stiffen up and tense up. Also, I do something like that.
I gotta do, I just pull both my shoulder muscles. I pulled my bish shoulder muscle this morning.
Yeah, why did the clerk up and leave the executive session? Um, supposedly it was over.
But I have to like do some cardio, warm my muscles up and then stretch and then if I try to do any exertion, I'll just pull a muscle like that. Getting older, bro, it's like you get older.
So they've locked themselves in there.
Now looking for.
That's actually um.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, older kids get to do more, old you feel, right?
If that door's locked from the inside as well, uh. It's a fire.
Yeah.
Code violation.
Breaking the law in the house, whatever. Almost happened. Oh, you're good.
Very weird. Very, very weird. Not a good look, Sheridan. Ghost says they're conspiring to arrest us, calling in police officers. It's all good, Bravo, it's all good. Rewind, there's an exit on the other side. You filmed it. Yeah, there has to be another exit out there. Wasn't it, yeah, but wasn't it this door right here? I think all three of these doors are to that room. I don't think there was another way. Because this is essentially the second floor, see? And this just is a courtyard and it's snowing. Great, it's starting to snow. You think they're watching the live, how to figure out getting by us? Maybe. I say they're having an unauthorized meeting because they're still in a quorum. Keeper of the list, Regan, don't do what? Yeah, there's gotta be a fire exit in there somewhere. Where's our little security guard guy going?
But there, according to these guys, there's no other way out.
It's snowing. Did you see that? Yes. Is he leaving?
No, but it's probably checking around.
Was he told to leave? Yeah, there is that door down there. But that's to the police department. There's a door down there.
Are they just gonna let us like stay the night here?
Where? Hmm.
Are they just gonna let us stay the night here?
I think they're trying to figure out how to arrest us.
You think so?
Mm-hmm.
Did you keep watching the live stream?
Yeah.
What was it with your signature?
Uh, he said that my signature was not legible.
Not legible.
I'm having a hard time reading this one.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think that's legible.
That's what I'm saying, his signature.
This is a clear tap on you, I mean.
On, on.
Yeah, so that guard.
That's insane.
I don't know how he's gonna get back in because that door locks.
He got tipped off about First Amendment Auto Rights coming in or was he just telling about it? Bryce, security guard, he heard over the rest talking and he said, oh yeah.
Yeah, I think they went downstairs. So I didn't hear something.
They knew you were coming. Oh, they knew you were coming because they saw my video. They said that we were coming to City Hall.
Yeah.
I think they're being escorted out that, that door downstairs. I think they went downstairs.
Yeah, I don't think they're. They sneak out over there talking.
One hundred percent, I believe.
The security guard did, he just walked out, went to the left, went down in that hall, remember that night when we were watching the, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's where they came out.
Yeah.
Is there, is there another exit from that room?
I think they went downstairs.
They're probably not even here.
That's what I was.
So, is somebody gonna come and tell us that we have to leave or are they just gonna let us sit here all night or what?
Oh no, they're probably, they're gonna trespass on us right now.
Oh, because we're in here? No one told us to leave, so.
Yeah, good luck.
They're probably watching us from the view.
No, they're watching. Fuck you, and fuck you, and fuck you.
Alright, so we got all our papers.
So I guess we're gonna have to come back on a different date. I'll be organizing a mass audit.
Alright, let's flip this around.
What is the exact crime we can charge him with?
Let's go find us some cops. Yeah, he. Yeah, yeah.
Waiting for us to say, come in and arrest us from the end and then nobody told us to leave.
Yeah, nobody told us.
No.
Nobody told us to leave.
Well. Stop recording me. You don't have my fucking permission to record me.
I'm in violation of.
You asshole.
Well, I always record you because people wanna see you.
Oh bullshit.
You know what I mean?
They all just wanna hear me. Yeah, there's a lot of cars out there.
I know, man. Oh yeah, Ryan says she's so hot. People have been saying how hot you are.
Oh, stop.
Seriously, go read my live chat.
Do you know how many grandchildren I have?
You know how many?
Grandma's hot.
Our audience, the, you already know, our audience ages from forty-five to sixty-five.
Yeah, that's true.
You're actually young for them.
Yeah, I know. I'm like the twenty, I'm like the twenty-something for the seventy-year-old something. Is that how that goes? Thanks, guys. Appreciate that.
Paul says Regan is hot. And Lou, Lou says she's spicy hot. And Cap Gamer.
Somebody commented today on one of my videos that they feel sorry for my husband.
I saw that one too. I saw that comment.
You feel sorry for him?
Dude, he's more of a.
That dude's living, that dude's living a very fulfilled life and they feel sorry for him. I said, well, come say it to his face. He'll reciprocate in kind.
Yeah. No, here's the thing, guys. People, people like the trolls, they think that, that Regan's just like that all the time. Like, see how she is right now? Nice, smiling. Like you guys have seen our videos, the banter between her and I, we're laughing. She's not like, we're just chilling, like, we're out like at lunch or something. She's not like just yelling at the waitress, this is, these pancakes are cold.
By the way, my pancakes were cold, the other day when we went to lunch, I waited patiently for thirty-five fucking minutes for some warm pancakes. How's that for patience?
Yeah, and she didn't yell, throw the fork at her, stuff like that, guys.
I'm a very reasonable person, people get what they, these, it's the cops, they get what they ask for, it's government, they get what they ask for. I don't have to engage with people in private business or private transaction, I can just go, whatever, and walk away. Government, I cannot, I have to do by force. So, if I don't like what you're doing, you're gonna hear it, it's that simple.
So are we just waiting over here for someone?
Well, I don't know, I think someone should go check that stairwell, it's starting to snow.
Yeah, it's starting to snow. Is it right here then? As long as we leave, we can't come back in.
Well, I know, but go check that stairwell.
Want me to go down there and check it?
Yeah, we need some cops. I think they're all gone. I guess so. Cowardly.
There's no one down there?
Yeah.
I mean, what were they gonna do, just let us like hang out, and then, and then all night?
Well, I thought what we were doing was against the administrative order, nobody's gonna tell us it's not?
That's kinda bizarre, they would just turn all the lights off and then no one would think to tell us, hey guys, time to go, we're closed? You know what I mean? They're so scared of us, I think maybe they are just bluffing.
They're gonna lock us in for a night at the museum?
Yeah. I don't know, like, it's kind of like, I, I think maybe they are just bluffing, because they know they're gonna come out here, we're gonna say, hey, we're recording, what are you guys gonna do?
Yep.
And they don't wanna be put on blast, embarrassed in front of my, our audience.
Yep.
And uh, looks foolish, so they, they stoned out of here. So we'll probably come back, guys, if you, if you're interested in joining us on the follow-up for this, the follow-up on the follow-up on the follow-up on the follow-up.
Unreal. Thank you everybody for these super chats tonight.
I wanted to see if uh, AFA wants to fly out here then.
We don't know if we're supposed to leave or not. Barbados, I wanna be in Barbados, somebody's watching from Barbados. Look at the snow, look what we got, we don't got no Barbados here, damn it.
Is MLH in your uh-
MLH? No, I haven't seen him in here tonight, I don't think.
I saw him over there.
Did you? Uh, maybe earlier.
He's in there, uh, hit me up, bro, to come with us on the follow-up.
Yeah, this would be-
As many people as we can, gotta get the Denver crew, you down?
You love it for the first five minutes of snow, yeah.
Well, we'll try to get so that everyone can, can make it.
Gonna get, honor your oath to come out there and stand in front of, stand out in front with his bless the homeless vets sign, I'm all for it. You absolutely, you absolutely can, and we can gather out here for redress of government, so, don't think we can, dummies. Yeah, they probably came out this door.
Yeah, they must, there must be-
Another camera, look at that, another camera.
No, I'm too far to the left.
Oh, and it's lit up too.
It just lit up.
See how it all snows? It's not snowing hard or anything, I just got new tires on my truck, I got some R T's, the hybrids. Here, I can't even remember the name of them, they're pretty good tires.
Yeah, they came out of here. Bunch of crybabies. So I think you oughta call up Mr. Walker, that city councilman that wanted to talk to you, was that his name, Walker? Oh, Whitaker, well, he's way off. Well, he was here that day, he was behind the glass when we were working with Reagan.
Oh, was he?
Yeah, I saw him back there. So he kinda knew what was going on, but I get the impression that he thinks if the city drafts a policy that says they require ID, that, then we should show ID. So, I have a feeling, because I brought that up tonight, when I told them what they're missing are their policies, nobody's provided any policies, they're gonna draft pol- This stupid asshole is gonna get with Hayashi and draft some policies now on uh, records. So, I gotta do, we're gonna do another records request. So, because they never provided the policies, we have to make that number one. Anytime you go somewhere new and you're requesting records, you first request their policies on obtaining public information. I guess.
I think so, I think they're just waiting for us to-
So you understand the policies first, on what they think they're gonna try to get away with.
So when we come back for the mass audit, I'm, I'm going to do a file complaint against Deborah Swenson, like you told me to.
Right.
The way I can get, um, then after that, I can do a public records request for the investigation file, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They did an investigation on me.
Yes.
You wanna tell them what happened?
Yeah, I, it's, it's my theory, and I think I'm probably correct, that they didn't know who DMA was at the time Deborah Swenson took pictures and video, so they did an investigation off of her phone, created either a report or a, this is a known person report, something to let everybody know who you were, because it was after that, that the cops would come out to the photo radar and start calling you by name. So, they did their own investigation on you.
Yep.
And, all they had to do was give up the, the pictures and the video to begin with, and we probably would've left it alone, but now that-
We'd be gone, I mean, I'd still be going to this, to the speed trap and doing that, but I wouldn't be coming in the city hall.
They're pissed, they're pissed, because you're bringing a lot of attention around their revenue scam, which by the way, I don't know if anybody heard me say that tonight, I got a records request, I think you probably all read it, Ellie posted it. Year-to-date collection in Sheridan's four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, they're on cue to collect just shy of a half a million dollars by the end of this year, just on those photo radar tickets, so that's forty-two thousand dollars a month that they're collecting.
That to me is the laziest type of police work.
And you're fucking it up, and they don't like it. But we do, keep it up.
You guys don't have to pay those, and I'm not an attorney, so, you know, I'm not giving you legal advice, but in the state of Colorado, you can have, um, Officer Long admitted it. You do not have to pay those, they can, have to have an officer serve you with a sentence.
Yeah, all those lights are still on up there. Huh, as far as I know, they're still in a meeting. I never saw anybody leave, except the clerk, which, that doesn't mean shit. Look at the snow, it's really starting to fly. Oh, in case you all missed the video the other day, Sheridan got brand-new SUVs. Here's one of them. What we're doing is against the administrative order by filming in the parking lot. Yeah. So there were three of these out here the other day. How many cops are out tonight? We should go find a few cops.
Well, I was gonna ask, you wanna do some cop watching now?
In this weather?
Yeah.
Um. Well. I don't know, let's send this stream and talk about it. And then uh, see if we're gonna go find us some Lakeside cop, Lakeside, Sheridan cops.
So I think Sheridan is officially worse than Lakeside now.
Sheridan's gotten pretty damn bad in a big ol' hurry.
Lakeside was trying to prevent us from going in there when they, they tried to draft up-
Yeah.
While we were there, that order, which was not drafted.
Lakeside did that same thing.
When we got there, they just put us on generic signs, now they're doing the same thing with Sheridan.
But interestingly, Lakeside doesn't have this big ol' revenue scam going on, so we've had to put Lakeside on the back burner, and Leonard won his case because he's so damn smart and persistent, and we just showed up, backed him up. It was a done deal, so we've kinda laid off Lakeside, but we need to go back.
Yeah, so, we're gonna be continuing with Lakeside, Sheridan is by far not over, guys. So are we gonna end this and then chop it up?
Yeah, we're gonna end this, guys, thank you very much, yeah, it's chilly, thanks, Johnny, be safe tonight. Heard a Christmas song, I've been listening to Christmas music for a week now. Mm-mm, no, visit Brenda, what do you mean by that? Yeah, Lakeside is Walmart's personal police department. Oh, I don't know what's up with that, Joe, I have to check into that. Oh, turn that off, who's playing that? Interesting. It's ringtones, music. Oh, I bet it's a cop coming off duty, and here we are filming in the parking lot. Is that a cop?
Looks like it.
Yeah. Is that his personal vehicle? Alright, you guys, we'll talk soon. Boy, this snow's picking up. Great, Ellie, keeping everyone informed, yeah, we're gonna keep them informed. Always flex your rights, from Texas, thanks guys. Alright, we're out, we're freezing, my hands are cold, thank you everybody.